It's a pleasure to meet you. Jenadee, what a pleasure to meet you. Thank you. Thanks for being here. Can I explain what's happening? I'll do some short whatever. Okay. Excuse me. Are you there or are we also in the background? Oh, yeah. There was a comment on that. If I didn't hear from you, I think you would've gone. If I'd come by anything and you're... I mean, should be before you go, man. Before you... Um, yeah. Two nights. And then two nights where I have a slight... I know I did. So... I know. I'm scared. 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 Yes. Yeah. I see that. I can see that. We're right there. I'm scared. 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 Yeah. They don't show their side. They're like... Like, it's weird. 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 It is nice. It is nice. Don't tell me you're tired. (laughing). How are you? What's going on? Are we supposed to be here? Very great. Here's the plan. So, currently, we're still number two. I don't know. Sometimes I have a mental problem. But all you need to know is that once I start walking up there, I'll be like... And you just come and join in. Next to me. You're gonna stand up there with me. Did you ever see any other students behind you? So, you're gonna be up there, and they'll say some nice things about you. We're gonna play your song. It's like, it's hilarious. And then, we'll do the... Well, I'm sitting there next to you now. And then, when the song's over, you will have an opportunity to say a few points to the Board of Education. But anything... Whatever you want. It's your moment. And then, they may offer some comments or questions. Speech, play the song, Utah, they ask questions. Is this your man? Is this the... The brother? I love that. How are you? I'm not officially... Are you a future Kaden Gil star? You got shoes to pin on. I don't know if you know that or not. Well, any minute. You know, he's a baby. Thank you for being here. Thank you for doing this. Be yourself up there. Put this quiet charade away. I need you to be who you are. Okay? Right. Yes. Yeah. See? Yeah. See? Yeah. 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 Be yourself up there. Put this quiet charade away. I need you to be who you are. Okay? Right. 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 Yeah. 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 Who's this guy walking across? Yeah. 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 Yeah.
Welcome, everyone, to the Tuesday, October 17, 2023 Board of Education meeting. We have all trustees present, and we have all of our student reps present. We always begin our meetings with a large elution, so if you'd like to stand with us...
(inaudible) to testify about the United States of America and to the Republic of America's citizens, one nation, under God, and with the law, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, we begin with recognition. Yes, Mr. Schmidt, thank you. It is with great pleasure that we recognize this evening as part of our TSD mission moment a young lady from Larson Middle School, winner of a very illustrious baking contest. So, Larson Middle School student Jenadee Keshat has won of 12 contestants who competed in the Kids' Baking Championship Series 11, which premiered last December on Food Network and Disney Plus Channel. Jenadee has had the dream of becoming a baker since she was six years old and runs her own business on Instagram at Jen's Creations. It's my pleasure this evening to ask forward Larson Principal, Mr. Brian Swizlak, to introduce Jenadee and present her with her certificate.
Good evening, all, members of Board of Education, Dr. Macheski, and members of the audience. I'm Brian Swizlak, proud principal of Larson Middle School. It is my pleasure to be here tonight, joined by Jenadee Keshat. Jenadee is a seventh grader at Larson, coming to us from Troy Union. She's an outstanding student who enjoys science, math, and orchestra. She's characterized by her teachers as highly motivated, hardworking, and delightful. They made note of her positive attitude, willingness to share ideas in class, and her focus and engagement. She truly embraces our four Rs at Larson of responsibility, respect, resilience, and relationships. Beyond the classroom, Jenadee plays the violin in the orchestra, plays on the basketball team, and she hopes to play volleyball as well. Outside of school, Jenadee, as mentioned, has an extreme passion for baking. She told me a great story about how she started when she was only three years old baking banana bread with her mother in the kitchen. Eventually, her mom would give her the green light to start cooking or baking on her own when she was five years old. At nine years old, like Dr. Macheski mentioned, her passion led her to starting her own business, Jen's Creations, Creations with a K, along with her last name, Keshat, where she makes desserts and cakes for her customers. Some of her top-selling macaron flavors include sea salt caramel, tiramisu, and chocolate kumquats. She also has some fan favorite cookies, including brown butter chocolate chip, brown butter toffee, and her smorgasbord flavors. Her baking passion also led her to that appearance on Season 11 of the Food Network Kids' Baking Championship. In that experience, Jenadee talked about her learning about time management and just having fun with the baking process and those being the important aspects of the experience. Consequently, she ran that semifinal experience there. They came calling again for Kids' Baking Championship Blood Curling Bakes. Jenadee was tasked with creating a fault line cake. She created a chocolate cake with caramel cookie filling and vanilla butter cream. For fault line design, she created a zombie coming out of the grave with fingers breaking open at the fault line. The flavor design and presentation wowed the judges, and her cake ended up being selected as the best fault line cake. For winning the competition, she earned a $10,000 Baker's Dream prize package that included baking tools and equipment. But she also inspired others like me by showcasing that spirit of our four Rs for the entire world to see on the episode. Jenadee is so driven, and I can't wait to see where her passion takes her next. She hopes to eventually open up her own storefront and develop business aspects of her company. Maybe there are a few investors out there for you. Regardless of what happens, I'm so proud of her accomplishment and honored to be able to share this special experience with her because it's given me an opportunity to connect with her and her family. I know she's really excited for tonight's mission moment, so it's my pleasure to present Jenadee Keshat to you.
Hi. So, what was the application process like to get onto the show in the first place?
Honestly, I was like, I kind of forgot about it in the moment, and they like reached out to me, and I was like, oh my gosh, I might actually be able to go on the show. And for Season 11, like when they told me on the show, it was just like, you fill out the application, and you kind of like decide who was like everything that they've seen you do, and then, like, there was like hundreds of kids that were trying to get on. Surprisingly, I got one though.
Where did you film at?
Um, so, I filmed in Naptoil, Tennessee for Season 11, and then in Cal, California for baking for the Halloween Blood Curling Bakes.
Wow.
Yeah.
What's your favorite recipe that you bake so far?
Some of my specialties are macarons, but I really, really enjoy making cookies because they're like a lot of fun and they're my favorite dessert.
So, you must not stay a whole while you bake for the show?
True.
Yeah. So, what's something... What's the experience like when you're actually there? So, what I ask is like, what's the difference between what we see on TV and then what you're actually experiencing while you're there?
So, it's actually like a lot of fun, but it's a little different because like when I'm at home, I see everything like in a pantry, and it's a little bit harder for me to be like, oh, I have this idea, and I have that idea. Like, everything is out, so I get to be super creative, and it was like a lot of fun, especially like since everyone on the show was like so well, and they all love baking too, we were like, we were like, oh my gosh, we became friends really quickly.
Awesome.
Well, Jenadee, we have a certificate for you. Do you want to join?
It's not $10,000. No. I think Jenadee has something for you guys.
Dr. Wilson and Mr. Schmidt.
Oh, she is.
Oh, poor. I was gonna make a joke, because they wear our Santa hat.
Oh, wow. Should she take a break?
My mother. So, it's a brand new chapter.
Oh, yeah.
What kind of macaron is it?
It's she's back there.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your experience, and I know it goes down. We're working on the board to come to you. Which one do I like?
I have another type of macaron, I don't know, like, it's mine, but I could probably get it. I have one, but you wouldn't be very long. It's like, could be brown, but I have it. It's actually about seven. I'm trying. Okay.
You probably should make a roll.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. It comes on, I think. Yeah. 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 Thank you. Our question is...
Thank you again, Jenadee. This is Keshat for coming this evening. Truth be told, Jenadee, I am a huge fan. I've actually watched every, every...
Oh, thank you.
Episode of Season 11. It was really cool.
Thanks.
Congratulations. Our next item of recognition is our student spotlight. We like, we, every meeting, we like to recognize the creative achievements of students in the TSD Creative Guild. This evening, we'd like to recognize Michelle Nardi, a senior at Athens High School. Tom Sputscher's here to tell us more about her very special work.
As always, thank you, Dr. Macheski, and good evening to our Board of Education.
Good evening.
What is an idea? Is it a plan, a proposal, a suggestion, or objective? These are just synonyms. I know because I Google them. An idea is the beginning. It is the seed that has the potential to sprout into a magnificent tree. It is the road that can take you anywhere. Everything we know in life, the clothes we wear, the cars we drive, the language that we speak, it all began as an idea. Michelle Narti has had 72 million ideas. Take a break, relax, go to sleep, these things are not in her vocabulary. If you follow district pages on social media, I'm willing to bet you already recognize her name as a Creative Guild student producer because this Athens senior does it all. Photos for the football team, award-winning videos, contributing to her bond campaign so Athens can get some windows, AP art, what will be two seasons representing her school in gymnastics. None of this is even the reason why she's here tonight. After more than a year of chipping away at it, Michelle has finished her debut original song, and after inviting her to be our student spotlight, she made the lyric video over the weekend. But that's the thing about the creative process, sometimes it's a sprint and sometimes it's a marathon. And to that point, I've never known Michelle to not finish something that she started, and that is often a real difference-maker in determining success. If you have never heard her sing before, you're about to become a fan, but get in line because outside of her family, no one is as big a fan as I am. Her voice is so impressive, you almost don't notice the equally impressive songwriting with crazy 13th and augmented chords. But first, just one more anecdote. A couple of years ago, the Creative Guild was basically starting from scratch, and I was hiring a lot of new kids for the very first time. One day, Adam Burns walks into our studio and says, "Another student turned this in for you," and he throws a work permit at me. I pick it up, I look at it, and I say to myself, "Who's Michelle?" She was not on my list, and maybe I shouldn't admit this, but who was I to say no at the time? I needed kids, so I hired her without ever meeting her. And as they say, the rest is history. Michelle has demonstrated her range, she continues to recruit more students with the Creative Guild I do, and she is truly a great example of what every student in our district has the potential to do. This is the beginning, and it's a wide open road.
Thank you, as always, welcome to any comments or questions from the Board, but first, if Michelle wants to say a few words, it's always.
Um, I just wanted to say I'm very grateful for the amazing opportunity to have something such as the Creative Guild because this was impossible technically because of that, because all the program that we have, aside from the photography and videography, I'm just very glad to be able to part of the projects that we put together over the past few years. And thank you. Thanks.
So, who was your musical inspiration?
Um, I don't... I suck at answering questions like that. Like, it's really hard. I feel like I just listen to a lot of different artists, and being able to like pull from the genres is something that I like to do because I can never really find one thing to like stick to, so that's my answer. That's the biggest one for me.
Now I know what the judges on The Voice do because I felt like I should be facing that when I was spun around and crashed. You were that good, and you belong on The Voice.
Thank you so much.
It was a beautiful song.
So, Michelle, what's next for you? What do you think your future plans are? You've got so many directions you can go.
Um, well, specifically for college, I know that I want to go into like the world of like business for like marketing and advertising and try to find that, a way to connect it to like my strengths, whether it be using photography or videography. So, yeah, I want to be able to combine it with the money piece of my head.
Yeah, I'm sure you'd like to.
Go ahead, do it.
Is there a place we can find the student?
Um, well, something is not actually released yet. Hopefully, it'll be released soon, but I'm thinking it'll be on, I'll shoot it on the platforms. I will make sure to do that as soon as possible.
Michelle, any significance of the name, Nat Tamele?
Um, it's my middle name, and for like the longest time, not really, not many people like knew me by my middle name and stuff like that. Well, let me just make this that, especially because I was reading for someone, I stood out, it was a little different for Missouri after this. He's been...
Michelle, we have a certificate for you. Can you join? In fact, we'll send you a certificate.
You want to take a picture?
I hope my brother's in the picture, right?
Next, for recognition, annually, we have the opportunity to recognize a significant number of students from across our school district for the National Merit, as National Merit semifinalists. The superintendent for secondary instruction is going to start this resolution this evening.
Good evening, thank you, Dr. Macheski, and members of the Board. This year, more than 1 million students nationwide from some 21,000 high schools entered the National Merit Scholarship Program. However, approximately 16,000 of those seniors are selected to be semifinalists. This evening, we will be passing a resolution to commend and congratulate our 60th National Merit Scholarship semifinalists. This is a remarkable number of semifinalists and a tribute to the staff and parents and the hard work of our students in the Troy School District. Hobbies of this resolution will be presented to the students at a reception on November 16th. I'm going to share those 60 names with you, and I apologize I had a time to those students whose names I may mispronounce, but it's important to recognize all of our students by reading their names. So, Rahim Basul, Vansh Bharti, Nadavita Sandra Khan, Michael Chen, Shri Vaishanavi, Charu Khuvada, Rappu, Vanvulu, Venad Das, Rohan Badhula Lush, Kevin Hartwell, Max Hong, Michael Hong, Jeffrey Hung, Karen Jin, Siddharth Kathikkeen, Mehi Kabidya, Lassia Kohli, Supra Ghuchibatta, Claire Lee, Stephen Lee, Brian Lu, Timothy Matthew, Brandon Mendoza, Siddharth Menon, Shreyas Nerle, Vishnu Dneer, Anish Nandamori, Sneha Narwani, Gwen Nguyen, Nashit Pathu, Kush Parik, Sruti Parey, Sania Kuniya, Ismail Komer, Anish Rajam, Ishanya Sani, Somiya Sakale, Akash Sadara, Anya Shah, Aksha Sharma, Karen Sharma, Sunga Shane, Ashmit Shrivasa, Seel Jin Shin, Kanush Singh, Ananya Sharie, Rajah Kulandandi, Nadi Shavatsavan, Ragva Sabraman... Ragva Sabraman, I'm sorry, Radra Sabramaniam, Jack Zbuboda, Sanjay Tilip, John V. Tongay, Gotham Vito, Eric Wong, Claire Wu, Julia Wu, Daniel Chow, Yula Shi, Nathan Zerrieli, Ellen Zhang, Matthew Zhao, and Addison Ju. On the resolution you have to read.
Oh, resolution?
Yep.
Ms. Anish.
Whereas the above-mentioned 60 students earn the prestigious honor of being among those selected nationwide as this year's National Merit Scholarship semifinalists, whereas student achievement is honored through the National Merit Scholarship semifinalist and finalist recognition programs, and whereas National Merit students reach semifinal status by scoring in the top 1 and 1/2% of the National Preliminary Scholastic Aptitude Test and earning comparable scores in the Scholastic Aptitude Test. We have therefore resolved that the Troy School District Board of Education adopts this resolution in honor of the aforementioned Troy School District students for their selection as 2024 National Merit Scholarship semifinalists.
Resolution by Ms. Anish, supported by Ms. Aney. Any comments or questions? Seeing none. All those with paper please say yes.
Yes.
Those say no. Thank you. Resolution passes. Congratulations to all of them. And our last recognition tonight has to do with the Learning Disabilities Awareness Month. National Associations for a number of different learning differences have each declared October as an Awareness Month, including Associations for Dyslexia, Attention Deficit Hyperactivity Disorder, and Down Syndrome, and others, actually. I found more after we started listening to this. To honor and magnify those efforts, the U.S. Department of Education has declared October as Learning Disabilities Dyslexia, Attention Deficit Hyperactivity Disorder slash Down Syndrome Awareness Month. In Michigan, Governor Whitmore has provided a more encompassing definition of October as Learning Disabilities Month. To that end, the Troy Board of Education would like to join the governor with her own resolution. Have a resolution, please. Dr. Phil.
Whereas the term "learning disabilities" refers to differences in how our brains work which may affect the acquisition, organization, retention, understanding, or use of verbal or nonverbal information. And whereas learning disabilities range in severity and may impact the acquisition and use of oral language, reading, written language, and mathematics. And whereas 1 in 5 individuals have a learning disability. And whereas learning disabilities may coexist with other disabilities and conditions, and they can affect individuals regardless of race, gender, sexual orientation, or other intercepting factors. And whereas disabilities are a natural part of human diversity, but individuals with learning disabilities may face discrimination or marginalization based on their disability and other intercepting factors and meaningful contributions to their community. I'm sorry. Whereas every person who has strengths in learning disability should not keep individuals from realizing their full potential in school, at work, or home, or as members of their families and their communities. And whereas specialized assessments and interventions involve all of home, school, community, and workplace settings can significantly enhance the quality of life for individuals with those disabilities. And whereas by creating an environment with the appropriate supports and services, individuals with learning disabilities can achieve their goals, make meaningful contributions to their community, and participate fully in society. And whereas understanding and celebrating the unique abilities and perspectives of individuals with learning disabilities is essential to creating an inclusive society that embraces the strengths and the potential behind Michigan residents. And now therefore we, the Troy School District Board of Education, joins Governor Gretchen Whitmore in commemorating October 2023 as Learning Disabilities Month initiative.
Thank you. Resolution by Dr. Pillcart, supported by Dr. Wilson. Any comments or questions about this resolution? Seeing none. All those on paper, please say yes.
Yes.
Those say no. Thank you. Resolution passes. Okay, and that takes us to the end of recognition. We are going to take a quick five-minute recess. If you're a part of the celebrations at the beginning and you'd like to go enjoy the rest of your evening, you could do that. If you'd like to stay and enjoy the rest of the meeting, you could do that. We'll give you a break here to step out if you'd like to. We'll reconvene in a while.
Soccer is still on?
Uh, you guys are playing Ghana right now?
She didn't want to come here. Oh, she wanted me to be here.
That's so funny.
Give her a hug for me.
Okay.
You got everybody? Okay, we're gonna plow on here. Do we have any additional situations? There are none, so thank you. Public communication items on agenda. Well, we don't, we don't have, okay. So that moves us to the general consent agenda. The general consent agenda consists of A, the minutes on the September 5, 2023 Board of Education meeting, B, the minutes of the September 5, 2023 closed session meeting, C, the minutes of the September 5, 2023 Board of Education workshop, D, minutes of the September 19, 2023 Board of Education meeting, E, the Treasuries Report for August of 2023, F, the TST bargaining team, and G, the server space update. Mr. Hoff may have a resolution.
We have therefore resolved that the Troy Board of Education takes action to approve items A, B, C, D, E, F, and G on the consent agenda.
Support. And of course, supported by Mr. Hoff. Okay, I have resolution by Mr. Hoff. So therefore by Mr. Hoff, are there any questions or comments on the consent? Seeing none. All those on paper, please say yes.
Yes.
Those saying no. Thank you. Resolution passes. Okay, that is fine. I will sit with personnel. It's available. It's available.
Good evening, Dr. Michalski, Mr. Schmidt, members of the board. We continue to make progress in our staffing. A few positions that we have still outstanding. I bring to you for consideration tonight two social worker candidates. You should have their resumes and information attached. They have a variety of experiences that they bring to us. So with that, it is recommended that the Board of Education approves the issuance of a probationary contract to the aforementioned social workers for the 23, 24 school year. Okay, thank you.
We're being asked to hire or support hiring two social workers. May I have a resolution, please? Mr. Hoff?
We have therefore resolved that the Board of Education takes action to approve the aforementioned personnel recommendations as to the above.
Support.
Thank you. My resolution by Mr. Hoff, supported by Ms. Anish. Any questions or comments?
Does this compete?
Oh, that will have to see again.
We are complete with social work services. We're fully staffed with social work. We have a couple of teacher positions that are still outstanding. We're down to three, and we continue to pursue those. And we anticipate progress here in the next, uh, year or so.
And how are we covering this now?
With experienced guest teachers. Yes.
Thank you. All those on paper, please say yes.
Yes.
Those saying no. Thank you. Resolution passes. Thank you all. Thank you, Mr. Kabel. Curriculum. I have nothing to say. This is to business. Mr. West. Good evening, Mr. West.
Good evening, Mr. Schmidt, Dr. Michalski, members of the board. Tonight, we are pleased to present our annual audit. The board did have an opportunity to review this with our auditors at the October 3 Board Workshop. And tonight, we have asked, and we're going to come and provide the formal presentation to the community as well. So without further ado, we turn it over to the esteemed Don Hanson and Michael Walsh, and they will present the annual audit.
Great. Thank you. Welcome again.
Oh, thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity to report on the audit results for the fiscal '23 school year. As Mr. West had just mentioned, we did cover these items in the Board Workshop two weeks ago. The numbers have not changed from the directs that we covered to the final issuance of the reports that you have now. I will start off with highlighting some key items related to the audit. It's all good news. We have issued an unmodified opinion on the basic financial statements. We noted no internal control deficiencies in the internal control processes and procedures the district has in place. An unmodified opinion is the highest form of assurance that we can provide that your financial statements are clearly materially stated, are fairly presented, and can be relied upon by others. We have also issued an unmodified opinion on the federal programs audit. So there were three programs that were tested this year, three major programs, the Child Matrician Cluster, the ESSER Funds, or the ESF Funds, and the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act Cluster, which is a significant number of grant dollars that come through. We noted no findings or question costs with regards to the grants. To note also, included in the audit work that we perform, we also test the bond and sinking fund compliance. So we test not only the dollars, but also compliance with the rules surrounding allowable ability of those costs. We ensure the district's only spending dollars within what was approved in the ballot language, and also the good testing involved and some other criteria that are tested. We noted no issues there. Also, we do assess the district's processes and procedures around budget act compliance, Michigan Budget Act. The district ran very close to budget in this area with less than $100,000 of budget for actual results. And that's on a $190 million budget. So that was very close. We do evaluate and disclose in one of the footnotes, no three of the district's financial statements adherence to the Michigan Budget Act. A highlight that we are commenting on at our school district audit this year is the nonrecurring 147(c)(2) allocation. This is, you can say to Michigan, have inserted a billion dollars into the pension plan this year, and the mechanism of putting it into the pension plan and spreading it out as revenue to all the districts, and districts have to turn around and expense that money directly into the retirement system. As a result of that, it essentially inflates the district's revenue and expenditures, and it was probably $1.9 million. So when you look at your revenues, you look at your expenditures, I think we're going to see an asterisk on our fiscal '23 years going forward when comparing year over year of every district in the state because of this. But it's just something to note, which is reflected in the revenue and expenditures in the financial statements. In the spirit of celebration, and we're in recognition for tonight, we took on a highlight that the district was awarded the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting for 2022. That certificate is included in the final financial statements. The district does produce a very comprehensive financial statement with lots of statistical information, a lot of information about the district and strategic plans, and you were awarded, I'm looking at the recognition for that. So congratulations. Also note, just noting, you know, nonrecurring funding. This is kind of the pandemic-related funding that all districts have seen over the past few years. I'm just highlighting, and I know the district has this on the radar, and is planning for the winding down of those funds. And my script, I have a highlight of snapshot of the significant pandemic dollars the district has received. In total, $28.4 million has been allocated to Troy public schools, and as of June 30, around $24.6 million has been spent. And as noted here, as you can see, the one grant that has a balance that is to be spent still is the 11T funds, the ESSER 311T. And there's about $3.8 million left. Troy has taken, the business office, budgeting, taken great care in how those dollars are utilized and the winding down of those dollars and how and planning for how those dollars are to be spent before the deadline, which is September 2024. I'm going to turn it over to Michael, who is going to touch on the highlights of the numbers. I'm going to turn it over to Michael, who is going to touch on the highlights of the numbers in the financial statements.
So our first slide here, just to show that some of the numbers here, we look at the governmental funds of the district for the year ended June 30, 2023. The two, first two columns here, we see the general fund and the 2023 capital projects fund. So those are the two major funds of the district for this year. The general fund being the main operating fund and the fund that we'll talk most about on some later slides. The 2023 capital projects fund that is new this year, that fund was created with the first series of bonds being received by the district that was holding on this past November. So within that fund, about $190 million of those proceeds were received, and then about $4.5 million was spent as for the year ended June 30, 2023. So our new fund balance in that fund is about $180 million. The non-major funds, that last column over to the right, consists of the school districts' special revenue funds, that service funds, and then some of the other capital project funds, including the sinking fund of 2019 capital projects. So the next few slides will focus mainly on the general fund. So this first slide shows general fund revenue for the district by source. Total revenue for the year was $189 million. The largest portion, that red bucket, at 68%, comes from the state. That includes foundation allowance, other categoricals, and then Donna highlighted the $9.1 million. So that's the one-time funding, but then you also receive your normal allotment of those 147(c) dollars. So that is also included, $24.7 million in total. You see that as a revenue, and I'll point that out as an expenditure for the general fund. The other buckets, we see local source revenue coming in at 21%. A lot of it is property taxes, and we'll highlight that on the next slide. And then the orange bucket there at about 5% is that the federal source revenue. As Donna mentioned, there's the education stabilization fund, a lot of those ESER dollars, there's about $5.5 million of that in that federal source. So just looking at that same revenue pool on this next slide and breaking out the foundation allowance as well as property tax revenue. So the foundation allowance, some of that state revenue makes up about 45%. That's driven by your people, membership, or your pay center enrollment, as well as the foundation allowance set by the state. We'll talk a little bit about, we'll mark that for now, because we'll talk about that on a later slide, those two inputs in that dollar amount. The orange bucket at 30% is other state local source revenue, some of the categoricals, as well as some of that 147(c) money. The blue bucket is property taxes, and those are property taxes that are actually levied by the school district, not the property taxes paid by the taxpayers that go through the state and then kind of filtered out back to other districts. This is directly levied by the district. And that percentage is also a little bit higher than some other districts because the district is all the way in the state. So the next two slides, we're going to look at general fund expenditures. This first slide shows it by object, effectively looking at the owner of the service or good that was provided by the dollars spent. For a school district providing a service run by employees, about 82% of that, the largest piece of that, goes to salaries and employee benefits. Purchase services makes up the next largest percentage at 13%, and a lot of that is contracted workers for the district. So roughly about 95% of total expenditures in the general fund is going to people. Included in that 82% of the salaries and employee benefits bucket is that $24.7 million for that 147(c). So again, we talked about it from the revenue side, and then that's where it runs surrounding expenditure side. So kind of increasing your expenditure pool by that, by $9.1 million for the one-time funding. So this next slide looks at that same expenditure pool of $189.4 million, and it breaks it up by function as defined by the state. So looking at it more from a departmental view. Direct instruction is the largest component at 66% of total expenditures. Just for comparison purposes, up at the top there, we highlight the open county average for direct instruction for fiscal year '22 was about 60.3%. So Troy's about 6% higher than the open county average based on last year. Indirect instruction comes in, the next slide just bucket, at about 13.6%. So roughly about 8% is going into construction-related expenditures. The rest of the, the remaining departments here or functions are pretty consistent over the past few years from a percentage standpoint. So we won't go into great detail on those. So as I talked about on a previous slide, 45% of total revenue comes from the foundational allowance. So this next slide is trying to highlight the two inputs that go into determining what that dollar means. The bar graph shows the student population for purposes of funding over the past few years, and then the line graph there shows the foundational allowance set by the state. We started, that orange column, we started 2008, 2009. That's there for reference because that's right before roughly 400, like roughly 400,000 people impacted all districts. And so as you, you know, as we go over to the right here, and over about a 12-year period, it took about 12 years roughly for that foundational allowance to exceed what it was in 2008, 2009. And that's not inflated, or not adjusted for inflation. So just to give you a sense of, you know, it's roughly taken 12 years for that foundational allowance to get back to where it was during that period. We see some marginal increases in that foundational allowance over the past few years. And then also just commenting on the bar graphs here from an enrollment perspective. So it's a pre-pandemic, Troy was relatively plateaued at about 13,000 students. In 2020, 2021, we see that super black comment up at the top there, and that's effectively coming out of the pandemic where the state and enrollment numbers were likely to decline. The state allowed districts to effectively use pre-pandemic enrollment levels to keep their enrollment numbers for funding purposes elevated. So in 2021, 22, that went away, and that's why you see that decrease from a foundation, or people enrollment perspective. The next slide here is just really for comparison purposes. This shows Troy relative to some of the open county, its open county peers in terms of foundational allowance. So Troy's really kind of in that middle bucket. And that, you know, certainly at the lowest funded district at the top of the slide here, but then there's, you know, still quite a gap from, you know, the highest funded districts at the bottom. So just wanted to kind of highlight that and show that for comparison purposes, and what that increase was in that TO bucket there from the previous year. So kind of, this next slide is trying to just show kind of what all that means from a revenue expenditure standpoint. Here shows general fund fund balance over the last 10 years. The bar graph is showing the actual fund balance, and then the line graph there shows fund balance as a percentage of total expenditures. And that's a metric that is used throughout the state of Michigan here. So specific to fund balance, fund balance ended at about $32.6 million for the year ended June 30, 2023. And really, the highlight here over the last 10 years is, you know, there's been a lot of challenges that school districts have faced from a funding perspective, from an enrollment perspective. During that, you know, like, it's during some periods of uncertainty, Troy's maintained a fund balance of 20 million or above during that period. Also, looking at it from a fund balance as a percentage of expenditures, Troy's never dipped below 3% during that time period. So fund balance remained relatively consistent, I'd say until about 2020, and then we see an uptick in 21 to about $32.7 million. And, you know, in the current year, there was just a smaller use of fund balance, but pretty much a break even for the district. On the line graph, the one thing I wanted to highlight here is, you know, fund balance has stayed relatively consistent over a little bit, three-year period, but we see that line graph trying to down a little bit in terms of a percentage of total expenditures. So that's really driven by, you know, we have these nonrecurring or one-time expenditure for the 147(c) of $9.1 million, based on the COVID dollars. So that's really increasing your expenditure pool, which is driving that bar graph down a little bit, even though your fund balance is effectively staying the same. For fiscal year '23, we expect that trend to kind of, to see that trend stay alive. So I'd imagine the average fund balance, or fund balance as a percentage of expenditures to decline in '23 once those numbers start. So quickly, just to summarize, so overall, for in terms of fund balance, we had that $32.6 million, and we have a couple of metrics here at the bottom that are common metrics that we could be looking at for districts. As we talked about, fund balance as a percentage of total expenditures coming at 17.22%. Just for reference, the statewide average last year was about 20.3%. As I mentioned, we probably expect to see that decline a little bit this year or so. You know, that I expect a similar trend to fully see here at Troy. Weeks of operation come in at nine weeks, and that's an important metric as, you know, we mentioned, there's been some uncertainty in funding, and really, one way to look at that is if your funding source is drying up for a period of time, how many weeks could the district operate based on its current fund balance? So it's roughly nine weeks or 63 days. Again, for just comparison purposes, the statewide average last year was about 10 weeks. But again, you know, we probably expect to see that decrease in time. So thanks for that, to wrap up our presentation.
Thank you. Just want to highlight positive results, unmodified opinions, and, you know, there is a lot of complexity in tracking and recording and all the compliance requirements for the one-time funding that's come through. And the district has a record of great processes and procedures in place and a record of no findings or question costs related to those federal dollars that have come through. I do want to take a minute to recognize Candace Moynihan and request for the Interior Business Office for the work it takes in preparing for the audit and being ready, and then when our team comes and audits, and the courtesy extended to the team. We really appreciate that. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Good. Any questions?
Going back to slide number three, if you don't mind. I'd like to get your definition or expand on ESER 1, ESER 2, ESER 2 equal, and the equal minus 11t. That may be confusing to our general public who is paying this. What does all of this mean?
So the different grants are correlated with the different legislation that was passed through the pandemic in support of schools. ESER dollars are earmarked specifically for public education and higher ed as well. And so each of those grants, ESER 1, ESER 2, ESER 2 state was a supplement from the state, and ESER 3, ESER 3 11t. Each of those are different grants with different allowableies, different requirements. They had to be tracked separately and carefully planned for and spent and budgeted for. And that was kind of the challenge of all schools in handling these federal dollars. And they are tracked separately because of those separate requirements.
So the ESER 3 equal minus 11t, there's about $4,000 difference.
There's a 4 million.
What?
It's state.
Right, but what causes that disparity?
Because you can only spend those dollars on qualifying expenditures. And so you've got allotted a period of time to, you know, plan accordingly and spend those dollars and then get reimbursed for it with those grant funds. ESER 3, 11t, you have until September of 2024. So many districts, Troy is funding summer school programs, additional support for students during that period of time and planning accordingly. You hear about this fiscal cliff coming because the supports, these federal dollars, does go away after September 2024. So as they wind down, it takes careful planning to utilize those dollars on allowable expenditures that are meaningful and impactful to the district. And Troy is on that.
Thank you.
So on the slide that has the, where we get the state funding and the property tax funding, just for clarity for people, when normal school property tax is in somebody's tax bill, that money goes to the state, not to this school district, but this is the, that 20% is like the additional levies, the milledges?
Right, so Troy is a whole-termless district. And so you are allowed, from proposal A, the funding structure, and to play, that can be made for, you are allowed to have a levy to support and make up your, the guaranteed amount that you have for funding, which is your foundation allowance times the number of students. You get a pool of that from the state aid, and you're allowed to levy additional funding for supporting, to get to your total guaranteed amount. Only whole-termless districts are able to do that. So the levy is just for your community and not part of the non-homestead and other taxes that go to a pool and then get allocated out and funded through state aid.
And so just for the general public's consumption, so districts that have them, like Birmingham, that has $3,000 more dollars per student, that is, that 20%, their number would be significantly higher? Because that money would come out of that?
It does depend, yes, but they would have a larger portion of their guaranteed funding coming from a property tax levy versus what a non-whole-termless district who doesn't have that. Have a question.
Does anyone?
Yes, let me finish.
I was going to go to slide 10, because I think that's the one that breaks down the funding. So that was, when we talked about this at the workshop, that was important because you can, you can see our new pair of districts and how much more funding they're getting. So can you just, once again, explain what a whole-termless is and what it might that has on what we're seeing on this?
Yes, and so you see the difference between the highest-funded districts and the low-funded, and then the lowest-funded, which are at the $9,150. The actual proposal A was put into place. There was a much broader disparity between the lowest and the highest funding. Troy, you're not the highest and you're not the lowest, but originally, when proposal A went into effect, in the funding model, because you were on the higher side of how you were funding your education at that time, there were certain districts that were earmarked to be able to levy additional taxes to help supplement what you're allowed and what funding you needed. And so I would say, like Troy, you would have been at the lower end of that scale in comparison to some other districts like Greenfield or Birmingham. But that funding model does still continue today. What we're seeing, though, is because the bottom is being brought up of the lowest-funded districts, is whole-termless districts actually rolling away over time because there's more equity in funding on a per pupil basis.
So it's just going way faster for us than local dollars. Sunny, did you?
Okay, yeah, I have a few questions. I think following up with the whole-termless, like you said, the whole-termless amount is reducing year after year. I'm assuming in a few years, that will disappear pretty much?
Yeah, and the state's working with each district in when the base foundation increases, it does impact how much you can levy. And so I know the business office is careful as to ensuring that you're not over or under levying because of the amount that you're allowed to levy. There's a certain amount that you're allowed each year. But yes, you're seeing that, especially for the whole-termless districts, that not as much of the funding was from property taxes compared to the state aid. Careful monitoring of that levy. monitoring of, of that levy each year.
Thank you. Um, if you can go back to slide six, um, okay, that's the one. Um, about thirty percent are from the state, local, and then about five percent from federal, right? Um, any idea, idea how much of that is from the one-time S R spending?
Yeah, so that one-time, oh, the S R funds?
The S R funds.
Are the one-time funds?
Oh, no, yeah, the, so the, the, the one forty seventy, you have like a normal allocation. So that, that would have been, I think, um, roughly about fifteen million dollars. And that included in, in that thirty percent is that the one-time, which would be new this year, which is kind of elevating your expenditure for the state. That's nine, that's nine point one million. But those are both being in that.
Yeah, that, that S R funds though would be in, um, you have a separate report, a single audit report that details all of those various grants and those are all reported there.
That's in this number though still?
In the federal number.
In the federal. Oh, it's not in the state? The state, some money came through the state, right?
S R two, and that would have been last year, it's not reported.
It's not in this one. Okay. Wonderful, thank you. And in slide nine, um, the, the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four, um, student count, is that actual or is that projected still?
That would be S R.
That's us.
Oh, yes, yes. And you just have to keep them.
Yeah, that's why I was wondering if that was the actual or that was?
It's very close, isn't it?
Yeah, it's about twelve more or something.
Three, that's two minutes.
Yeah. Okay, and slide eleven, last one that I had, of the last three columns, the twenty twenty one, twenty two, twenty three, the large fund, um, mostly because of the one-time, I assume. Do we have a slide that kind of takes away that one-time to see where we stand?
Um, I'm not sure. It's probably in, in the plan, uh, in the budgeting going forward. And we are consistently, uh, seeing, you know, the support and funding impacting fund balance for, just similar to, to how it's impacted the district. What's difficult is managing now the winding down of those grants and managing use of potentially fund balance to, to smooth out and, um, you know, manage your cost structure so that you are moving on without this federal support. Um, so that would be what is in likely your projections going forward.
Now, let me just clarify that because we've been intentional in each one of our budget presentations over the last three years to emphasize the federal funds, the one-time funding, so the board should be very familiar with how much funding's been in part, or in the budget process and what to expect when that, that money will not be there. So, uh, and we will continue that in our budget amendments in December. So there's, there's clarity amongst the board and the public on those funds and their availability.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I have a couple. If you could go back to slide eight, it's just clarification. We, the note at the top about the, the Oakland County average being sixty percent and the fact that we're sixty six percent, is that good or bad?
It's, it's a goal to, um, you know?
Specifically, what does that mean?
Kids in the classroom, um, they have dollars for kids in the classroom. So that's not, it, that's my focus, so it's not the, the supplemental, uh, supplementary kind of indirect, uh, instruction.
So thi- this says that Troy puts more money directly into the classrooms than?
Yeah. And so there was, there's about talk of having like thresholds for this to ensure districts are, and Troy, you've always had a higher, um, investment in directly into classrooms.
It's been a goal of the board to do that, but is there anybody higher than we are in Oakland County and that you, I?
I think off the top of my head, there's lots of great reports at the state. Mine.
There is none. So we're at the top of the county.
We are at the top of the county.
Okay. I think that should be said in public, that we're at the top of the county in terms of the dollars invested in classrooms. So I just want to make sure that I'll footnote, it needs something to disappear and I want to make sure that the public might understand that too. Okay, uh, and then slide nine. Um, I just want you to know though, I am Michael, about not correcting for inflation. You did bring it up, but you, you made a comment at the end to say it's taken us that long to catch up. Reality is, we have not caught up. Would you agree with me when I say that?
Yes.
On an inflation adjusted basis, we're operating, I think last time, Mr. West, I figured this out, were seventy five percent, I think, of what we were back in two thousand and four, when you correct for inflation. So we are still running very low. Would you say that was a reasonable thing for a board president to say?
Yes, and even, even with the increases.
Right.
Foundation levels last year and this year have been more meaningful, um, the costs are outpacing, they're about the end of that for this.
So, so the increase was five percent and our rate of inflation was eight percent. So we are still behind.
Yes.
Okay. I just need you to agree with me. I just think these are really important things for the public to recognize because, you know, if we come back later and say, hey, we need help, you know, to understand, they say, well, you have tons of money. It's like, we don't, you know, we're, we're losing every year, we're, we have less money to try to accomplish the same, the same goals. So, uh, so we are grateful for the five percent above, but it still doesn't make us whole. So, okay, forget it. I'm done communicating, but are there any other questions? Do the students have any questions? Okay. Thank you so much, both of you.
Thank you for having us. Thank you, we really appreciate it.
And I guess I, I would like to recognize Mr. West and Ms. Moynihan because, uh, this is all, this represents a lot of work and, um, and I know the, the accounting over the last three years of COVID has been a nightmare for you and your staff and it's really impressive that, uh, Plant Moran comes year after year and says, it's perfect, everything looks good, it's great, there's no, no corrections. And, and I don't want to ever take that for granted because, you know, I've been on the board twelve years and that has not always been the case, but with the two of you at the helm here, it just seems to always be the case. So it's, it's, it's very impressive and, um, the board is extremely grateful for your hard work. So with that, um, the administration recommends that the Board of Education accept the financial statements as presented by John Hanson and Michael Walsh for Plant Moran, the resolution to be. Dr. Wilson?
We have therefore resolved that the Board of Education accepted and approved the Troy School District's audited twenty twenty three financial statements as presented by Plant Moran. Support.
Uh, the resolution by Dr. Wilson, supporter of Ms. Havish. Is there any? Are there any additional questions or comments? Saying none, all those who paid, please say yes. Yes. Suppose they know, thank you, the resolution passes.
Thank you.
All right, that takes us to public communication on non-agent items. I have two, um, just kind of walk through the, the way this works. Um, this is an opportunity for you to, uh, express your point of view to the board, it's not a dialogue, um, in, you know, meeting here. Um, you, each person has three minutes to present, um, and Dr. Wilson here will give you a sense for when you've got about thirty seconds to go, I think fifteen and fifteen seconds, and then when you need to stop. Um, at the end of your three minutes, if you could just, uh, if you haven't finished, if you could just finish your thought, uh, as close to that three minute point as you can. Um, if there are areas of this discussion that need to be followed up with, we will, either we will follow or some from administration will follow up, that is an opportunity for you to come forward. Um, and I have Ms. Michelle Melzick. And if you can indicate if you have a student in the district and if you're a charter.
Should I just go ahead and start?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Michelle Melzick. I have a student in the district, I'm also from Troy. I have a daughter at Barnard. So I'll go ahead and get started. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Michelle Melzick, I'm a parent in the Troy School District. I'm speaking to you as a concerned mom and former elementary educator. I understand you care deeply about the education of our students as a school board member. I have concerns regarding the English language arts curriculum and the current curriculum review process. As a former educator and mom, I was surprised to learn that our district is using curriculum and methods that are not backed by science. I was also surprised to learn that our district is using curriculum and methods that are no longer being used by thousands of districts across the United States. The Michigan Department of Education also supports access to high-quality instructional materials aligned with the science of reading as outlined in the memo that I have copied for you here and I also emailed to you earlier this evening. I am also concerned about the level of parental involvement and the current curriculum review process and the lack of transparency. I'm asking the Troy School District and Board of Education to form a curriculum review committee comprised of parents, teachers, and students, and not just a few well-connected insiders. I'm asking for the district to send out targeted surveys to parents, form focus groups, panel discussions, and opportunities to review the curriculum should be held throughout the year. I find it very concerning that there is little involvement with parental stakeholders in the current process. I have provided information from the Birmingham School District in their curriculum review process, which is one of the most transparent in the county. The district heavily involves parents at every step of the process, I also emailed this to you earlier as well. I'm asking you to review the current English language arts curriculum by Lucy Calkins, units of study, the partnership between Lucy Calkins and the Columbia University Teachers' College of Reading and Writing Project has been dissolved. In light of these recent developments, I'm also asking for a comprehensive review of the current language arts curriculum and removal of the units of study curriculum. I'm asking for parent stakeholders to be involved in the process and the review. The current curriculum does not work for all students. If you review the current third grade outstep data, our ad scores look great. However, there are great disparities across certain categories. I have provided you with copies of the graphs in these packets. For example, the economically disadvantaged students score much lower than students that are not economically disadvantaged. These disparities need to be addressed and we need to find a curriculum that works for all students. There are also great differences in test scores across all of the elementary schools, yet the curriculum is the same. I hope you will review the information and find a curriculum that works for all students and will help address these disparities. Thank you for this time and allowing me to speak this evening as a parent in the Troy School District and as a mom.
Thank you.
Thank you. If you want to stay on the desk, I'm.
Thank you for your time this evening.
And then we have Mrs. Tracy Owens, is there a speaker?
Hi, I have three children in the School District. Two weeks ago, I came to the board workshop and presented you all with a resolution asking for you to make October Dyslexia Awareness Month. I didn't have much hope that you would actually place this on the agenda as some of you and some administrators in the district seem to believe dyslexia is not a real diagnosis. Unfortunately, you did not place it on the agenda, but instead put up a resolution to make October learning disabilities awareness month. As a parent of a child with dyslexia and a child with autism, I believe in awareness for all disabilities is very important. However, students with dyslexia have been ignored and harmed for far too long in this school district. I also asked the State Board of Education member if she would put a similar resolution to the Michigan State Board of Education. And last Tuesday, October tenth, the State Board of Education voted unanimously on a resolution to recognize October twenty twenty three as Dyslexia Awareness Month. I'm glad that our State Board of Education is taking the lead when it comes to literacy. In the past year, the Michigan Department of Education has released the Michigan Dyslexia in a book. They have offered letters training for teachers in pre-K through grade six, paid for with a state grant, and have sent out a memorandum to all school superintendents titled Guidance on Reviewing, Selecting, and Implementing High-Quality Instructional Literacy Materials, which says, "When teachers have high-quality instructional materials aligned with the science of reading, they can focus their time and energy on addressing the individual needs of each student." Currently, there are three bills in the Michigan Legislature that will help children with dyslexia. Senate Bills five, six, seven, and five, six, eight, and House Bill five, zero, nine, eight. These bills are moving fast, and when they are passed, they will update the state's approved reading assessments, require professional learning and evidence-based instructional methods that are grounded in the science of reading, require structured language, and not allow the use of predictable and leveled books for reading instruction. When these bills are signed into law, Troy's use of Lucy Calkins, Read and Recovery, and Fontes and Penel will come to an end, but it is very concerning that this district continues to use these instructional materials knowing that. What is even more concerning though is that there are people in this district who make decisions about curriculum, who do not understand science or do not believe dyslexia is a real diagnosis. If the proof you were sending out to support your continued use of this curriculum states the retiring of the word dyslexia is long overdue, I would suggest that your retirement is actually what's long overdue. Because it is crucial that this school district embraces the changes the state is making regarding literacy instruction and the prolonged resistance only puts this district and students at risk of falling behind instead of being the leader in the state of Michigan.
Thank you. All right, that takes us to our students. All right, now let's start. Kind of going down the dappens.
While you may have lost to the Colts last Friday, I can proudly say that the Hawks' Nest is more lively than ever. Our cross-country team recently celebrated a astounding success at Belle Isle showcasing their exceptional skills and teamwork. They are running the trails today at Gates. Last Tuesday, our varsity volleyball team also won against North Armington, who were second in the league before Lady Redhawks put them in their place. With an impressive array of two dozen events, Athens Science Olympia is eagerly preparing to host a home invitational on November eleventh. Their ultimate goal is to secure a spot at nationals this year. Guiding both novices and seasonal members, our robotics team is learning essential skills to excel and is eager to head to regional competitions. Medical and hospital heroes club has commenced annual service project, putting together craft kits for young patients at the Troy Children's Hospital. The Athens P Club has also begun a bottle dry fundraiser earlier this week, and the National Arts Society is gearing up to host senior citizens for a heartwarming, matinee performance of The Wizard of Oz. And finally, the Athens Orchestra is performing their Oktoberfest concert as we speak, which will be followed by a festive trunk party. In terms of our classes, our AP Human Geography students embark on a journey of discovering each other's migration stories, creating cultural tapestry to visit Detroit. Throughout, thought-provoking discussions took place in the Athens Social Justice Project as they explored the significance of Indigenous Peoples' Day. Students from our criminal law classes passionately presented their advocacy projects. Highlights included the four-day work week and food trucks. This is just the beginning for our red humps, they have much more in store. Thank you.
Questions from Harley? All right, let's move to Troy, Heidi and Jayla.
Well, what a great month it's been to be a Troy Colt. Um, tonight I'd like to start off highlighting our sports teams and athletes. For starters, we took three phenomenal wins against Athens this past week.
And you, you too.
Girls and boys cross country on Wednesday, on Thursday volleyball, and on Friday night football. Um, for football this week, the boys are matched up against Frasier, they're favored to win, and following the victory, they will be headed to playoffs for the fourth time in a row, um, for the first time since nineteen ninety-two. Our boys' cross-country team are now ranked top ten in the state. We had a student, um, two weeks ago, Vishpa, break the school record for boys' cross-country. And then our boys' tennis team has won regionals for the twelfth year in a row, and they'll be heading up to Midland for states this weekend. The girls' golf city autumn is also headed to states this week, up in Lansing. Um, we also had a very successful homecoming week. Um, the teachers participated like so much, and we're hoping to see some more of that during the Athens weekend in February. And our, um, our students also did really well today, even as far as spirit days are coming up to our men's. We had around, um, a little over fourteen hundred students come to homecoming, the actual dance. And last year, we still didn't beat our record, but it was really good, it was very close. Um, art band on Thursday, they will be performing their annual cult stampede at seven p.m. in the gym. They'll perform the halftime show and then all of the music just from the season. Our orchestra hosted two-day annual spectacular on the twenty-fourth and the twenty-fifth. The twenty-fourth, the Federal Works and Symphony will perform with the middle school orchestra's vocal enhancement. And then on the twenty, on the twenty-fifth, the they all write skits and they perform that in between their thesis. Our play, um, we're doing middle wing this year, our opening night will be on the third, and then performances will be the third, the fourth, and the fifth. Our project lead have paired with Greeners Food Bank, they're collecting food and they're accepting virtual donations, um, for this local organization, it's in Oakland County. It's a competition between a lot- It's a competition between a lot of the schools, you know, well, all schools in Oakland County. I'm not really sure what the prize is, if you raise the most, but any non-personal food can be put into your first-hour teacher's bin, and it's all in a couple of weeks. And the cool thing about this particular place is because you can donate virtually, so things like milk and stuff like that, you can just go and like buy it online or like put in your first-hour teacher's bin. And you also get a donor party if you're a first-hour teacher. So that's pretty cool. We have a trunk party coming up, so not only does it just bring the Troy School District together, because it's open to everyone, but it just brings the community together. And we had our biggest one last year, and we had close to a hundred cars. We're hoping to top that again this year. And that's about it.
Is dodgeball popular in Detroit?
It is. We are eight.
Fifteen probably.
Fifteen probably. No, no, yeah, ready for break.
Eighty-four in the national area. Ah, okay. Someday, I'm gonna make it to the dodgeball tournament. I always miss it. Yeah, no, I can see it, okay. Great, I'll move over to T and what's going on over at TCC.
All right, so Troy, you're obviously great together, but TCC's had to announce transition conferences, parent teacher conferences went off that edge. Teachers were safe and welcome and connected from various bases alike. We were expecting good games in the coming month to close the great first quarter. We won tomorrow. Their meeting was today. They had a great turnout, about twenty women, I think. They're group focused on empowering young women to reach their fullest potential and give them a great head start into like after-high school. The book club has finally received their book, The Picture of Troy and Greve. They're excited to start reading and meet every Thursday. Our business math class, students are working hard to finalize school spiritware designs. T-shirt production is expected to be in full swing by November first. And a student journal following Spirit Week Week is in the works, encouraging students collaboration and expression. And I do apologize for last month, I didn't know enough about our passion products, or we missed that, didn't read about that. They are being kind of put into our curriculum with our classes like human impact on the environment and our t-shirt production and all that, so there's.
Thanks for following that first.
That's all.
You have to tell the tragic story of the greenhouse.
Oh, yes. I was out that week six, so I didn't hear about it until I came back, but I guess everyone didn't hear about it till you came back. So our greenhouse that our students built tragically blew over on a Sunday, really windy Sunday, and it, the S E M caught it the day before. It moved, like someone picked up and moved it. And then we came in on Monday, you know, it was their Sunday, so we came on Monday, and it was just scattered about half a mile down. The panels were all missing, and we had students spending lunches even to this day trying to find all the panels and put it back together.
Is it back together, or is it still in construction or reconstruction?
I don't know if any permanent damage happened to it, but I know they are still looking for some of the panels. But it's back outstanding, right? It's just some of the roof panels are.
Have we figured out how to anchor it? Smoke doesn't leave us.
That is the conversation that we're talking about right now for that process, is we can't hold it into the pavement, so we just get some sandbags, lay it down, maybe a little frame, come over and shut the class, so we're throwing out ideas as.
Okay. Yeah, it's very sad when everything has taken flight.
Well, they were walking down it, because I was there today, they were walking down it today.
That's a good practice in resilience, right, in recovery, so, okay.
It's a little windy.
Great, okay. Narada, I saved you last, so you could see everybody else go through before you did, so welcome, tell us what's going on over there.
Hey, well, good evening, everyone. I hope you're all having a tremendous Tuesday. It has been a very busy month at IA East with club activities and major events. For two years now, the IA Indian American Student Association has been holding a culture show to celebrate all of the diversity at our school. Over the past week, it held tryouts for the culture show, and there will be new cultural performances this year, like the Ukrainian dance. Additionally, Spanish Honor Society has created its upperclassman/underclassman buddies and had its first few events, a review session for the freshmen, and a movie-watch party. Model U N held its first workshop for members to improve their position paper writing, and H O S A has completed its member registration and will begin the event selection process soon. Along the clubs, there have been many important events. October is National Bullying Prevention Month, and last week, IA had its No Place for Hate kickoff. In the upcoming school year, a student committee will be working to create a more safe and inclusive school atmosphere where every student can thrive. A big goal of this committee is for IA to achieve the official No Place for Hate title. To add on, Fall Olympics took place on October sixth, and House Omnibus won the Phoenix Cup. House Omnibus is one of the six social houses we have at IA, which are very similar to the Harry Potter houses. One purpose of our house system is to foster intergrade bonding, and we received a lot of positive feedback from both students and teachers regarding this topic after Olympics. Last week was also our IA East homecoming with the theme of haunted hopo, because it was on Friday the thirteenth. The highlight of the night was a balloon drop of over four hundred balloons, something that had never been done before, but will hopefully be the start of a new tradition. Lastly, tomorrow juniors will be taking the PSAT. This year, IA had seventeen national merit semifinalists, and we're looking forward to how our current juniors will score. Powder puff will also be happening this week on Friday. I think the juniors will win, but they'll be a little bit biased. For Powder Puff Spirit Week, Monday was my personal favorite, anything but a backpack day. Today was Dirty Day Jamboree. Tomorrow will be PJ Day, followed by the classic Throwback Thursday, and Friday will be Team Color Day, where everyone will hopefully wear blue and silver to support the juniors. And that is all I have of what's happening at IA. Thank you.
Great. Any questions?
So how is the school now like these new houses instead of grade-level Olympics used to happen before?
Yeah, so when I was a freshman, that's when we first got in like the social hop system. Before then, it was Olympics, and all the school events were done by grades.
Yeah.
And the seniors would always win. So that's why, I would say even our current seniors are a little bit salty because they don't have things done by grade, and they don't get to win senior year. But I think that as the years have gone by, the teachers, the students, everyone is becoming more accepting of our social hop system. As we mentioned, this Olympics was really successful. So many students came up to me and were like, "Man, I think this is really working. Like, I got to meet this freshman or this sophomore." You really get to meet people and do fun things that you may not have gotten to do before. But I know I met like these super cool freshmen that I probably wouldn't have met otherwise. So I think it's really successful, and in the future years will also be more successful.
You mean they're cool freshmen, not juniors?
Super cool freshman. I've never heard that term before.
Yeah, well, I mean, we have house system, right? So we gotta find out, but yeah.
T, you're getting jumped at.
How do you guys choose to resume a house?
Oh, so, so.
There's a sorting game.
So, so I have put that idea out there, I think that would be super cool. I've also put in the idea to have like Quidditch, just like, and a new event. I'm also a really big Harry Potter fan, though. The way the sorting happens is really not so cool. I think, so it's basically based on your freshman lit class. So whoever's in your lit class is also like gonna be in your house. And it's also cool because every, every other day, you'll get to meet with your house as freshmen and really like bond with them, and then that relationship kind of grows for about four years. But that is how you're put into houses. I think even if we could make it seem like a sorting net, it would be cool, but I'll put it in again this year.
So, PSAT, they've got googles, is that why they were able to do PSAT there? Because don't we have, or chrome, yeah, sorry, chrome.
They have a mix of devices, and they also all come through our iPad that are over there by support in case things happen tomorrow there. But they were not on the iOS seventeen.
That's what I was gonna say, iOS seventeen puts us off for everybody else until what date?
We are going from the twenty-fourth to the twenty-sixth.
Twenty-fourth, so.
Tuesday, Thursday.
It's here for technology.
That's right. So IA East is gonna show us the way and use all their devices and have a very fascinating experience.
That's right, okay. Great. Okay, Nancy, anything you wanna share?
Just a comment that, you know, between looking at Jenny for our mission enrollment and Michelle for our student spotlight, and then honoring our merit semifinalists, and then hearing our wonderful students talk about the things that are going on in their schools, it's, I tell you, our students are amazing, and I'm just so happy that we have an opportunity to really get involved in the things that you're passionate about, you know, as well as pursuing, you know, your academic education, but also through the sports and the arts and the passion projects and so on. So just congratulations to our students.
Yeah, so Dr. Olson and I went to the manufacturing day at Troy High a few weeks ago, and it was really great to see all the enthusiasm surrounding the event. There was a lot of speakers. They were all very passionate about manufacturing and what resources were being brought to Troy High, and the students were just very grateful for the curriculum memory, the cool 3D printing and other tools that we were seeing. So I'm just really great, I'm grateful to see that, just because we're in an area that relies so heavily on engineering and manufacturing, so it's great to have, give those opportunities to those students. And I also like to point out that it's National Principal Month as well, so I'm sure this kind of showing casey pictures on Facebook for a lot of principals. There's a lot of great comments going out, so I just want to thank all the principals for all the hard learning and dedication to their teachers, staff, and students.
Good.
I have a few things. One, because it goes along with tonight's presentation, but I get asked a lot by people, you know, what are my impressions and how things have been going since I've been on the board? And then one thing that I tell people, there's things that I didn't appreciate as much and didn't really think about, and one of it is, you know, how important it is to have a top-notch finance team. We're here to educate, but we can't do that unless we have high-level professionals and we need a core function. So I do wanna, I do wanna comment on that, because I do actually talk about it with people a lot. You know, and even something like us being a hundred thousand within budget of a hundred ninety million dollar budget, that's significant. You know, we have districts that next door who have this budget of about fourteen, seventeen million dollars a year, so, you know, it's, it's, that's a really important function to make sure that everything else we're trying to do is working. On a fun note, I attended both homecomings this year. I was throwing out candy, so that was, that was a lot of fun to be able to interact with families and students in a, in a, in a happy type environment. And then we also, last week, we had an opportunity to do some classroom visits. We were able to see some of the new math curriculum at that elementary and middle school level, and I was really impressed with the student engagement that I saw with the new, with the new curriculum. So we, we had the opportunity to visit the grade classroom and then also an eighth-grade and math day classroom. And so that was really nice to see how that, you know, new implementation is going.
Shifting gears a little bit, coming up on Saturday, October twenty-eighth, is National
Prescription Drug Takeback Day. The Community Coalition and the Troy Police Department recognize this national effort to keep our community safe from unused and/or expired prescription medication. That is both for people and for pets that you might have not used completely that is in your closet. So they ask that you remove all the pills from the original containers, place them in a Ziploc bag, and drop them off there. It's in the lobby of the police department. There's a contraption, it looks like an old mailbox receptacle that's painted white. No questions asked, drop your unused prescription medications off, and they cannot take, unfortunately, liquids, aerosols, or sharp objects in that container. But it's important to remove unused prescriptions, take them out of the hands of unsuspecting youth or experimenters. Prescription drugs are there for a reason, but if you're not using them, by all means they're expired, get rid of them and put them out of the house.
People have mentioned most of the things that I had wanted to talk about, so. Homecoming was a great time at both schools. It was fun to interact with students, and it's always good to pass out candy. As Mr. Hop said, S and E Day was fantastic. I enjoyed seeing the classrooms, seeing the new furniture, that's very fun. I'm very grateful for our principals as well. The only thing that I kind of mind notes that no one has talked about yet is the theater. I know that both of our physical reps talked about the upcoming plays, but also I just wanna make sure people know that the T S D Theater YouTube channel, so like the orchestra concerts and cabaret concerts and things like that, if you're unable to attend them, you still can go back and watch them, and so these students do a phenomenal job. And so just utilize the district's YouTube channel for T S D Theaters if you wanna get a glimpse of some of our fantastic musicians and performers, because I know sometimes it's hard to get to all the performances, but it's an opportunity to highlight so much of the fine arts talent in the district.
Great. Just a couple of things, most of which is already, again, as mentioned, mentioned by our students and or board members, but I did want to make mention the fact that starting at the beginning of October, I had the opportunity to begin with this Matante, this people auto as well as this free for our fall update. So for the community, for those of you that have not, where we've not presented, we're actually just getting started, so the majority of buildings, both from a staff perspective as well as PTO perspective, we've not had a chance to yet be there. We encourage the community, if you wish to come up, please do so. We're hitting a couple of really important topics, budget, enrollment, and so forth, which was mentioned this evening, talking a little bit about that. Our bond update, which is really important, as well as our Portrait of a Learner, work that this board was involved with last spring. We finalized that work, and we're sharing that with the community. I do want to make mention to, to the community that our twenty-three bond, I remember last year at this time, we were, we were ramping up to the November election, and just very thankful that this community supported that bond initiative. We have, we have already begun that work in earnest. We are in the process of planning spending of that first series, a hundred and ninety million dollars, for key areas, two that involve specific, mostly our elementary. So over the course of the next two summers, summer twenty-four and summer twenty-five, we will totally redo all elementary playgrounds, as well as we'll have furniture in all elementary buildings, as well as Baker and IA East are part of that current pilot. Those are two really important projects. Every one of our elementary's will be impacted over the course of the next two summers. The other two areas that are really important, high-profile areas, athletic areas at both Troy High and Athens, will be impacted already starting this spring with work being done. Significant amount, more, more significant amount of work being done at Troy High because of the work we're planning at Athens, and we're hitting Troy High pretty hard this coming spring. We'll start this spring in preparation for the fall of twenty-four. Some of that will take a little bit longer, but we're gonna expedite that as quickly as possible. And then lastly, probably the most exciting piece is the design of our New Smith Middle School. We will have renderings available to the community if you have a chance to come out to our, to our fall update, as well as soon, there will be renderings and updates on our, on our website. But we're excited for the, for the board around January-ish timeframe to take action on bids for Smith Middle School. We are on schedule for a spring twenty-four groundbreaking at Smith and a spring, excuse me, a fall twenty-six opening of the new Smith Middle School. So thanks to everyone who's been involved in that process, Mr. West, Mr. P. Polato, our partners at T M P, as well as Barton Mallow and so forth have been instrumental as well as our administrative teams and many staff and community that have been involved in helping provide input for, for that particular project. It's gonna be a, a real great asset to the Troy community as we, as we look forward. The only other thing I wanted to mention that at last, last we saw, I believe, that Athens, we're at District Play for Soccer this evening at Athens, Troy High, excuse me, won four to nothing over Ferndale, four to one, excuse me. won four to nothing over Ferndale, four to one, excuse me, and then Troy High is, Athens is up three to zero at half against that number-one rated team in the state, Earl. So hopefully they can hold on in the second half. If they do so, we will see a Troy High-Troy Athens District Final on...
Go to Slab on Thursday.
Thursday at seven o'clock, at Earl. So they can hold on, all right, that was it.
Great, I'm gonna riff off your comments about Smith, because for those of you who have not seen the plans, I'm really excited. I can't wait to see this building come to life. And I will tell you that in talking to anyone who's been involved in the planning process, I've had nothing but high praise for the process and for input. And I'll tell you from a board perspective, you know, our initial round when we were able to see some of the plans, I really appreciate that TNP listened and made alterations based on what we offered. I know we used TNP for the preschool, and they were also excellent then, but it's nice to see a partner like that that is engaged and recognizing the needs of the community. So I can't wait to see those final, final, final plans that they could advertise. But I do wanna just comment about the Troy High Athletic Field improvements, too, because although that's a lot smaller in scope, I think it's gonna, they're very exciting changes for the campus at Troy High, and I think it's really gonna transform the athletic fields for all of our kids at Troy High. And it's, and it sounds like it's happening just in time, because in addition to the work happening at Athens, we'll have, Smith is gonna lose their field because we're gonna be building a new school on it. So we're gonna be relying on Troy High to help our Smith kids with the field and track for the time of construction, actually, several years, because we won't be able to give them their fields back until after improvements are done at Larson and Owen Park, because we'll be using both of those Smith buildings for years, so. So anyway, so there are two very exciting things there. Homecoming was a blast, a thousand pieces of candy went out of the stands, so I've been talking to Mr. West about kind of stress injury claim. Turn candy, but it is, it's, to me, it's quite, it's just a blast, all the little faces at the side of the road throwing candy out of the, that's a blast. And then I wanted to circle back on the math and furniture for those of you that weren't able to attend. It was, it was very interesting at a more global level, too. Looking at curriculum school, in the eighth grade room, I saw evidence of MTSS, where I had two advanced students that completed the task, and the teacher had me and said, okay, here's another challenge, go for that. So they were not sitting around waiting, they were working on the next task. It was nice to see that happening, because it's something that we promised would happen, so I appreciated that when we were in the classroom. And the level of, the level of agency that I saw with the kids at the elementary level and at the middle school, which is I'm owning my learning, and that ownership around the learning led to greater engagement. And so the level of enthusiasm in all those classes was palpable, it was fascinating. Looking at the fifth grade class, when they were talking, they were doing a division story problem around a grand opening that had a package of sixty-three balloons and four tables that it had to, had to spread on. My favorite answer was, when they were trying to figure out remainders and do the division, one boy said, I wish they gave him a package of sixty-four. I wouldn't have to worry about this. But even that, I was like, good, you're thinking about this as a real function as you go through. So a lot of really fun moments there. The other thing is, we did step into an ELA class in Baker Middle School with piloting in the furniture, and they have rearranged that room multiple times. The last time the room was rearranged, the teacher had the students discuss the furniture and how they wanted to change it. And as I went through the room and talked to different kids, it was fascinating to have them explain what they had recommended that they move and why it made the classroom better. So again, that, the reasoning, the, you know, the broader thinking skills, it's very exciting to see that. And again, agency, engagement. So there's a lot of our staff that are doing really good work right now, and it's resulting in students who are engaged in their learning and happy working all the time, and maybe not even realizing how much they're learning as they do. So it was a really fun day to see some of that in action, so. And then, you want to just say here, you said?
No, I, one last, I just want the, knowing that we're in the awareness of conflict between two different ethnic people groups that have family members in our community, we just wanna show our support to people who both have Israeli and Palestinian heritage and know that we are supported and welcome in this space.
Thank you. All right, so that just leads me to the, doing the laundry here. Okay, so November fourteenth is the next workshop. We do not have a board meeting in the month of November, just because of the timing of the election and Thanksgiving. So our next board meeting will be in December. So we'll actually have two workshops before we have our next board meeting. So our, again, next board meeting is November fourteenth at Central Office at six PM. And then when is the December workshop? December fifth is the next one? It is a workshop. December fifth is a workshop, December twelfth would be the final board meeting. And I think this whole, is there anything? We could dismiss class, so. I think we're all set, we're...
Is the electric team, are we doing a special meeting as well?
Seems like we'll have, we'll start the special meeting, right?
Yes, yeah, I'll start to discuss, yeah, right.
Okay, I think we're set, thank you.